Item number eight.
Item number eight, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-six to rezon from dwelling A to professional office G classification, share nineteen, block twenty-eight out of El Hardin subdivision located near Dana Avenue and Old Port Isabel Road.
Mayor, can we do eight and nine? I think they're together.
Okay, we drew eight, nine.
Item number nine, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-six dash S to allow a medium retail specific use in an apartment for share nineteen, block twenty-eight out of El Hardin subdivision located near Dana Avenue and Old Port Isabel Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the property right here shaded in red, this by the Old Port Isabel Road. In this particular case, there's two, two applications. One, the applicant is resuming from dwelling A to professional office G, and then a specific use application to allow a medium retail in an apartment district which, which you have there. In this particular case, the, the plans of the commission were unanimously to approve a forced commercial use in, in this apartment district.
And medium retail would include what, a convenience store or?
Convenience store, uh, drive-through, bodega, uh, a tire shop, but it's, it's like retail more or less, a Circle K.
You kinda threw us with the tire shop.
It's a forced commercial use.
Okay, and P and Z's recommendation?
Approve.
Okay.
I'll move to close.
Second.
Close by Commissioner Sisneros, second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor to close?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
Approved by Commissioner Camarillo, second by, no, Sisneros, and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I abstain. Okay. Nine, ten, ten, I'm sorry.
Item ten, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash fourteen seventy-nine commending the subdivision ordinance by requiring a percentage of land to be dedicated for parks and/or public schools and dealing with related matters, including two thousand dollar penalties.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, we discussed this at the last meeting. This is an ordinance that had been in our, I guess, in our things to do for a long time, but with Commissioner Atkinson's assistance and Mr. Cabblers and Mr. Kellers, very fast, I guess, we were able to bring this before you.
I thought this was a second reading, Ben.
Well, we discussed it last time and you did comment on the changes, but working with, with our attorney and clarifying the language, I thought it was best to...
Let me ask the attorney a question. I was very specific at the meeting, last meeting, to where this first reading back then was being approved subject to the changes that we stated here. So, that's the purpose of having first readings, to hear from the public and amend or do whatever you need to do and pass it. We did that. Okay? So this is second reading, I think this is a mistake.
I don't know.
Because it was very clear.
I think so.
It's been posted.
It was clear.
It was very clear.
Yeah, but it was posted.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying because, you know, we gotta get, I just hate to see things coming back when there shouldn't be no need. We've seen to where, yes, it's legal, no, it's not legal, yes, it's legal, no, it's not legal, and we need to follow the process. Now, you should've said something back then and said, "No, no, no." Or somebody should've said something back then. No, this cannot be done because I made it very clear in voicing, okay, we're gonna make those changes and if it's approved, it's subject to those changes and it's a first reading.
My understanding was that some members of the city commission wanted to bring it back to revise it, if that's not the...
No, no, Jim, that's, that's not what he's saying. Basically, working with Mr. Chozy, we, we needed some formatting, so formatting was one, and clearing up of the language, and I think it's always prudent to, to, to have a first reading because of a technicality, somebody might not come back later and, and throw out the ordinance because we made some textual changes to the ordinance. So, other than, than having another comment period, basically, the ordinance remains the same with two, two changes that I think will benefit.
What are the changes?
So, Ben, it was Sash's recommendation then to make it a first reading, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, of course.
What were the changes?
Okay, two changes are very, are very clear, and I think we, there were some other items tonight that alluded to that. One was with the AP, CPNL, saying, the gentleman saying about what market value. Okay, where I, where I did this, I had market value of the property, five percent of the value of market value of the property was gonna be donated in, in money. Well, in this case, you're gonna get into argument as to what is the market value? A market value to you may be different to a market value to me. So what, in this particular case, I cleared up the ordinance by saying that the value is five percent of land value as shown in the Cameron County appraisal district records. So that's a documented record already adopted by the jurisdictions that has a particular value to every piece of property in Brownsville. So if the developers coming in and saying, "I wanna develop this piece of property," then I would have, because they do have to submit as part of their plat, their tax receipts that they're paid up in taxes, I would get from there the value of the, of the, of the present district's value, five percent. So that's very specific, so I cleared it up.
So what credits do they get?
Okay, credits, okay, exactly, good point. They would get credits if they have done a more than five percent in other, another part, another, they, for example, they've given land to the city and another...
I was saying, we didn't talk about that here last time.
Yes, we did. There was a credit already built.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. But this is the first time I heard market value defined the way you're defining it.
Exactly, so, so that's...
If there's an arm, a willing seller, an arms length sale, how can you come up with a different market value definition?
Because we're not, we're not buying it.
No, but you're, you're basing it on market value, but you're saying...
Of the appraisal district value.
That's mass appraisal, that's not...
No, we're, we're, that's right, we're, because we're talking about what the county appraisal district has determined the value of that piece of property, or do you expect the city to go out?
Before developed or after developed? If the county has it before developed, I can apply the same definition if it's already been developed, the area.
Right, so, so we want it before developed, if you wanna talk about what the market value would be as the subdivision finished, then we would require, as you know, an appraisal, and, and then we, the city, would have to go out and get an appraisal for every piece of property that they're gonna give us or value of a subdivision before, so I can determine the value. In this particular case, very easily done, I, they're gonna submit the receipts as part of the plat, required requirements now, is that they will give me the value of that piece of property, I would take five percent of that for the subdivision and say, "This is the fee that is owed to city." The other case is that, another change is that for, for subdivisions that are master planned of twenty acres or more, you're, you're gonna give us land. For anything less than that, you're gonna give us cash, and the reason, and let me show you one example. I went back over the weekend and looked at what, what developers have already given us land for parks in this community. One of them is Rancho Sampedico. One of the sections in Rancho Sampedico is that here, there is a twenty-seven acre subdivision. We're requiring the ordinance and five percent, five percent of the subdivision has to be given land or money. In this particular subdivision, twenty-seven acres, one point five percent of our money. This is one acre, so, so, if those are law, we have contracts, we have the authority, but if any, if acres, twenty or more, they'll give us money. Anything less than that, they're not, it's cash.
Yeah, Ben, get on the mic for the viewing audience.
Anything, anything less than twenty acres, they will have to pay us a fee of the appraised value of the, of the, what's in the county records, the appraisal district records, because you don't want pieces of property, or what I don't think you want, pieces of property that are smaller than an acre scattered throughout the community. That goes along with the, with the other argument that was done tonight as to who's, who's gonna maintain them or who's gonna, how many lots, how many little pocket parks you have throughout the community? If there's a, if there's a, a park that has not been fully developed by the city close by, then that, those minis will be earmarked to develop that, that property that's close to that proposed subdivision. So, so those are the two changes, other than that, the ordinance remains the same.
Let me ask you, Ben, what constitutes a park? Do we have a definition for that? Do we have to put a badge?
No, and, and keep in mind that, that a park could be as, as having all the amenities that you see at Dean Porter Park, all the way to just green space where people can just go run, fly a kite, play baseball.
Okay.
I mean, there's a public space, open green space where the residents of our community can go and just have fun.
So no basketball courts, picnic tables?
Yeah, and it'd be all land. Keep in mind that ordinance talks about the, the, it has to be tied into the goals of the master plan and go before the Parks Board. So, so, you know, they, they have already accounted for how many basketball courts, how many parks in this community, we will go to them and, and do the, the fine tuning of the proposed park.
Who pays for the amenities? Who pays for the amenities? The amenities on the park?
The five percent. The five percent, I mean, that's what we're saying is that...
But that's the land.
No, there's two parts to this ordinance, Commissioner. There's twenty acres or more, they're gonna give you land. Any, any twenty acres or less, you're gonna get a fee, and that fee is for acquisition or to, to build up parks that you already have in this community that are in the proximity of this proposed subdivision. And then you also would be able to augment that with the four B that was developed for parks in this community, so, so it's just, you're just building on, on, on those investments that you already have or those revenues or resources that you have. The city will never have enough money to build parks where they're needed, but this is one way of obtaining property and obtaining funding.
So parks would oversee those revenue, those revenue sources? Parks Board?
Yes. I think that's an avenue that, that's already in existence for that.
Let me ask you this, Ben.
Ben?
If it's five percent, okay, of the total land area, which it should be based on what, before pre-development, not after it's developed, who picks the five percent? The developer does, or does the city do?
No, the city does.
Huh?
The city does to this, you see, if you have twenty acres or more, you're gonna designate land in your subdivision.
Yeah, but the five percent, I can give you five percent of worthless land next to a railroad track.
Oh, you're talking about designated in the property? Who will pick the land?
Yeah, who will pick the land?
That would be the developer, I mean, it would, it has to be, it'll be master planned as to, as to where that development is, it's gonna be. Then, you know, the other thing is they have to meet the goals of the park's master plan. But, but being next to a railroad track doesn't necessarily mean that it'll, it'll be a bad area, it's just how you mitigate it, if you want...
So there'd be city oversight as to which property was designated and if the city wasn't...
That's correct, and, and it's part, you see...
I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that, because I've seen where land that's next to railroad tracks be sold at sixty-nine thousand dollars an acre with no road to it or anything like that, and that's pretty expensive for the taxpayers. Okay, so the city gets to pick the five percent?
No, it's part of the master plan and then the city gets approval.
Right, when, when master plans are...
You don't wanna get stuck with some lands less in value and sold at a premium to us based on the five percent.
It just, it sounds too much like a pit to me. You know, we have those problems with the pit over at Paso Llorisaca, and this sounds too much to me, just like a pit.
No, but this goes to the ci, the city.
Goes to the city, it'll be maintained by the city.
City generates this money to provide parks, so make sure that these subdivisions have parks for the kids, so there's, instead of building four hundred houses on, on a hundred acres and not providing for, for, for the community in there as far as a park, it requires, we're just, they're just copying what McCowen's doing and other cities are doing and providing a need for, for, for the youth.
I keep getting phone calls that, the ones that we have in existence now, the ones that we maintain, aren't being maintained. Skip, are you ready for something like this? Do you have the crew? We can't even get the crew right now for the sports park, you gonna have it for this?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Right now, we do need some more money for maintenance of our facilities, I think I've always stressed that. This is tonight...
It doesn't.
Excuse me?
It doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We definitely depend on four B money, that's what, five years ago, I think four B was brought into play for our park system along with other quality of life issues. There's, there's a couple of things in here that I, I've just looked at this tonight that, you know, I really have some questions about the one point five miles from another park, some things in here that I would really like to see clarified. We're talking about the park master plan, not the city master plan. Now, there's, I worked in other cities that this was a little bit more defined and a little clearer. So personally, I would like to have a workshop, I mean, that's just my opinion, I think there's some things we really need to clarify before we jump into this.
Let me ask you, did you sit down with Ben before this?
No, he talked to me on the phone, but there was some things in here that I don't believe were on the first draft.
And let me ask you, last time I ain't here, you opposing this in any way or asking the questions, last time you were here?
No, I, we...
But he's bringing up the concern now.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just wondering...
We're going for changes, but things have changed since the first draft. I'm not a, I don't oppose the plan, I think it's a great idea, but we just have to define and get it right the first time, how we're gonna use this plan.
Okay.
Uh, there's some, you know, if you take funds in lieu of the land, you need to designate, okay, I, can I spend this money on a park that's really needed six miles from where the subdivision is? Or do I have to stay within a one point five mile radius of that subdivision?
I think it goes into the pool, does it not? I mean, common sense tells me that, Mr. Keller.
Tells you, excuse me?
Common sense tells me that it goes into the pool.
Right.
I mean, common sense tells me that.
Right.
I can answer your question.
But it says in there one point five miles.
The ordinance says one point five.
It says one point five in the ordinance.
The ordinance says that one point five from the subdivision, you know, there's no point in putting another park within one point five miles. That's what you're trying to say, and there's no point in that. What we're trying to do, and I think the intent of the Commissioner Atkinson was here, was this, that the city's growing, the city cannot afford to build parks, so, and this is a way to address the shortage to meet the need.
Right.
Is that right, Commissioner?
I'll be honest with you, when I, when I found out about this ordinance, this is always, this has been an effect, they've been writing this up for months, and when I talked to Charlie Cabler, I talked to him about the need for, for more parks and stuff like that, and this is something that they had been working on for almost a year.
That's why I'm surprised it's the first reading now.
This is staff recommended, Camarillo, you know, and, and it's, it's gonna provide parks for the, for the children of Brownsville, which we advocate for, I know you do a good job of doing that, you know? Part of this master plan for the Imagine Brownsville, we sat with the task force, some developers, and they were, hey, why don't, what, where, how is BISD gonna work with the city to find out where we put the next school, where we put the next park? Look what they did over there with Bright Elementary, put it way out there in the county, but if we ever do annex it, we're gonna have to go back and do all the roads, we're gonna have to provide curbs, everything, and it was just split out there. People can't enter, buses can hardly get in there. Part of this Imagine Brownsville addressed this issue, and that, when I brought it up to Charlie Cabler and Ben Medina, this is something that we're already doing. So, did I jump on the bandwagon on it? Yeah, because we have to listen to the task force too and Imagine Brownsville, when they're saying, "We need a, the city needs to know where you're gonna put the next school." And this is what it addresses here too, is where we're gonna put the next school. Are we gonna let some, some developers say, "You know, put it over here behind Los Fresnos because I got the politics to get it there?" Or are we gonna use Imagine Brownsville and use the task force and everybody on those committees that wanna see this go through so we can dictate where our growth is gonna be in the next five to ten years? And this is what, exactly what it does.
You know, Commissioner, I, I mean, I don't disagree with, with, with the concept, I think it's a great concept and it's, and it's been long overdue. I think though, what I mentioned at the last meeting was BISD, was BISD a part of the process? Because it's not just the city of Brownsville, it is BISD as you mentioned, because they're buying the land and they're building the schools, and here we are, you know, following right behind them. I just wanna make sure, you know, whatever gets financially, monies that do come in, will we be able to even keep up with it? Are we gonna be in the, be in the situation we, we see ourselves now?
Why don't you ask Charlie Cabler? He's been working on it.
That we are looking, how do we finish the sports park? And we start pulling monies here, here, and there to say, "Let's get this thing done." And that's my question with all these other properties, because land's gonna be developed, homes are gonna be built, and we're all, we're gonna see green space, we're gonna see park space. Are we gonna be able to develop it and take care of the park with what we, with the resources that are gonna be provided? That's an issue, that needs to be addressed, it should be stated here. I don't just wanna approve something that we're gonna be like, "Well, what did we do? And are we actually meeting the actual need?" That's my only concern, I wanna make sure we do meet the need.
Commissioner, Commissioner Garza has the floor.
Mr. Cabler, you're the city manager, what is your recommendation, sir? An ordinance can be adjusted, made adjustments to, if we see that we need to make adjustments to it later on, we can, and we put it back here for first reading again because of all these questions we're receiving. Are we gonna be able to afford parks in the future? Well, the answer is that we have to be able to afford many things in the future, including parks. So, I think Skip should've had plenty of time to look at it, he failed to do so, that's his problem. We need to pass the ordinance.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, you, you may address the commission. Please state your name.
Neil Simmons, I'm a developer. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, we are in favor of this ordinance, and we wanna commend Mr. Atkinson for bringing it up, but we are concerned with the way we're approaching it...
I can take credit for that, 'cause it was staff who brought it up to me, don't give me credit for it, all right?
Well, you, you seem to taking the ball and run with it.
Okay.
Well, anyway, I, something I'd like to point out, and probably some of you on the commission, you're new, you don't, you don't realize the situation and what we're getting ready to get ourselves into. And like I say, I'm for the ordinance, but we need to give a lot of thought to this, and the mayor brought it out at the last meeting. Are we gonna be able to afford this program? And we've got to structure the ordinance, and I think Mr...
What program are you referring to, Mr. Simmons?
I beg your pardon?
What program are you referring to?
I, I was referring to the ordinance here, the park program.
I, I didn't say we could afford it. Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, you were wondering where the money was gonna come from, I watched you on TV, Mayor.
Okay.
All right.
Coming from what, for what? For the means?
For the means.
Okay, but they addressed that, they addressed that, thank you.
All right.
Okay, they addressed that.
The concern that we have is that today we have around twenty-five parks. Ben Medina tells me that he is approving in good times about seventy-two plats a year. Now, not all of those are going to be with parks, because some of them will be master planned, and there would be units that'll be approved one at a time after the master plan and the park has been set out in a master plan. But let's say that we end up, not with seventy-two parks, but with half that, let's say we end up with thirty-five parks a year. We today have about twenty-five and we can't stay up with them. And so what we're getting ready to do is we're getting ready to double this every year on the number of parks, and I think you can ask Mr. Keller, does he think that we're going to be able to stay up with one acre parks? A twenty acre track is a one acre park, a two-hundred-and-twenty-five foot by two-twenty-five.
I asked him that and he said we could.
And let me point, let me point out, let me point out something, that if there's a park within, with one, one point five miles, the, the money will be taken instead of building a park.
That's not what this says, Mayor.
Yeah, but that's my understanding of what it will do, and that money will be put into a pool to maintain the parks, which is better than the alternative to where the city has to build a park a hundred percent and maintain it. Is that right, Ben?
That's right, but he doesn't say that, Mayor.
That's right. Okay, we can make the change right now to clarify, can you make the change right now?
Let me finish something else. I gave fifty acres for a park on Alton Glor.
Thank you.
And I gave it seven years ago with a reversionary clause in there that if it wasn't developed in five years, I'd get the land back.
It is a park.
And today, seven years later, it is still not developed. You've worked on some land adjacent to the fifty acres, but not the fifty acres.
What, do we have a bicycle trail?
Now, let me, let me finish, and we have, we, we have given, I gave a site to Los Fresnos Elementary School next to the kickball field, the kickball field is not fully developed either, we need money for it. So what we need to do is have large regional parks and not parks strung out all over the city, and we would like to have a workshop and see if we can't come up with something that would provide that for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Mr. Garza, please state your name.
Renato Garza, I think that if we can have a workshop, we can work together. I think some of you said you wanted to work together, this is an area which we can work together. Why not have a workshop? Table this item, and we can work, have a workshop. Now, recently, this first reading is because it was, the advertising that, for the public hearing was, was wrong, was, did not contain everything that needed to be in there. So, that's all we asking for.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody for or against?
Good evening, my name is Reba Garza McNair, and I also share a concern about maintenance. I was one of the people that worked on the Dean Porter Park renovation committee, and that was a substantial effort, about ten years, and one of the caveats of that effort was that we dedicate employees to the park, that park specifically, and what has happened over the years is that initially, people were dedicated to that, and as other parks have come on, less time of each employee has been dedicated to the Dean Porter Park. And now comes the Linear Park, and here comes the Sports Park, and they are large parks that require employee time to them. And so that is a concern, and the way the ordinance is written now, it does say that you will be devoting, if you give money instead of land, you will be devoting it to something within one point five miles of the subdivision, which I think makes sense. What I think needs to be determined is where the parks are going to be. I, I, it isn't a problem for developers that are developing large tracts of land, substantial tracts of land, and it isn't a problem if you're gonna be giving it to the school, because then there's a playground in the school for the children to play. I think the problem is for smaller subdivisions and smaller developers, and also having the resources devoted, even if it is only green space, which is a lovely, green space is lovely, trees, I mean, it, it, green space alone can be lovely and useful, but someone needs to be there to mow it, someone needs to be there, some, someone needs to be there to be responsible for it, and that is where I think maybe a workshop in delineating that if you're gonna give money and the park has to be determined where that money is gonna be spent within one point five mile, I think that is a, I think that makes sense because there's a neighborhood here, you want the idea that within one point five miles, somebody is going to have access to a park. But the resources is important, and having a twenty acre track and getting one acre, even if it's green space, someone has to go there. So I think that is, I think that is reasonable concerns that people have, and I particularly have, because I have seen that we're getting large parks now that require more manpower than is being allotted to it, and that is a concern, and even if, even with money input for infrastructure, it is, how many employees are you going to devote to the maintenance even of a large park? There has to be some sort of formula where you all decide, "I've got a ten acre park, I'm gonna devote this many man-hours to this park based on the amenities," and I think that probably makes a better sense as far as resources, instead of having a one acre space here and a one acre space... a one-acre space here, and a one-acre space here, and a one-acre space here. So I think that is something that you do need to consider in your ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McNair. City Attorney.
Ben, how does, how does McCallum do it?
Commissioner, let me ask City Attorney this.
Yes, sir.
If, can you put clarity into this ordinance right now to where if it's, if there's a park within 1.5 miles and we take the money instead of the land, that the money is put into the pool for the mains of the park system of the city of Brownsville? Doesn't have to be for any specific park, it can be for the whole system. Can that be done easily without any complications?
Yes, sir, it can.
Okay. And okay, if we were to do that right now, could we pass this first reading?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay. And we won't have to have another first reading?
No, sir.
Okay, because that's-
Well, I would assume not.
Because, I mean, that same thing happened last time. Okay? Okay, let's, 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 anybody, we got to close this up.
I've got a question. I just like some clarification. Do you mind?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ben, one of the, one of the questions I have is, is we talk about specific allocations for specific master plans or master planned communities. What about situations where you have green belts? There was talk about ecotourism by the zoo director, having areas where you could have wildlife migrate from one area to another. You know, these could all be and should probably be included in a, in a parks or a green space master plan for the community. Would the ordinance as written a lot for that? If you're simply going to have 5% here or 5% there? I mean, how does, can we use this to have walking trails in different places and to have green space? Because I agree with Mr. Atkinson, we need to have parks, we need to have, you know, areas where people can go out and enjoy, but we also need to look at, you know, what's the big picture? If we have the birding areas, where birds are going to migrate from different areas so we can promote the ecotourism that we already have in this area? Will this ordinance as written allow us to do all that?
Mr. Triani, the, the ordinance talks about meeting the goals of the Parks Master Plan.
Imagine Brownsville.
The, well, the Parks Master Plan is being developed by the Parks Department. It, it'll be a component of the Imagine Brownsville, but it's a specific plan, plan for parks in Brownsville. If, if the consultant accepted or is utilizing what we gave him in terms of our land use plan, we in the land, we developed a, the Northwest Plan, which actually identifies a corridor for migrating cats that will, that will take cats from the river through green spaces. This is what we did in the map and with meetings of the public, taking a green corridor from the river west of Brownsville, going north to the World Birding Center, continuing to Los Fresnos to go to Laguna de Tascosa. So when, when a developer comes in with his plat, we will take our plan and work with him to, to develop his master plan. And sometimes, we will get the master plan before, but we will work with him through the advisory, plat advisory, to, to, to align or to help him designate the green areas if he is in that, in those jurisdictions or in those green areas. It's up to him to, to adopt or to utilize our plan, but through advice from the, from the plat advisory, and then ultimately the P and Z, we, we would, we would identify and help him say, "This is, your green space should be here because it will, it will conform to our land use plan." So, so we, in the plan department, you know, we deal with a lot of, a lot of these plans and a lot of projecting what the future would be, but it's up to them to help us realize that future or that picture. But, but yes, we would work with them and-
At least my question is, we would work with them. My question is, does this ordinance as written allow us to enforce that proposed policy?
Let me find the item. It does.
Because that's what I'd like to ensure, is that we're able to do that. And if you're telling me that it's okay, well, it's okay, but are, I mean, is it, does it do that?
There's a section here, which I'm trying to find real quickly, Commissioner, that has to conform to the Parks Master Plan.
You're on section I? Is that language sufficient? I don't know if Mr. Kabbler can help you out or-
There's another section and-
Well, let Mr. Gore come forward while you're looking it up and then come back to it. If this is a rarity having here, please state your name, please.
I'm Les Gore. I'm with Gore Development. I'll be brief, I know it's late. I was involved when the city of Brownsville took over West Brownsville Little League Park. And one of the major issues the commission had at that time was getting federal money and state money because of the location of that park in an affluent part of Brownsville. Most of the development going on today is going to be north of Alton Glor. And I think I really need to look at, are you going to be able to get state monies there? Are you going to be able to get federal monies if we do these parks? And I don't think Brownsville wants to be known as, "We've got 100 parks," but they're all small little pockets that we can't maintain. And I know that's a big issue here. You've got sidewalks that run from Parades to the Expressway on Alton Glor. I have never seen a city out there taking care of those sidewalks. And people run and walk down those sidewalks. I have a three-man crew full-time, and any property of mine that, that fronts those sidewalks, I weed eat and mow. We try to on a weekly basis, but minimum every other week. And there's places for people to go right now, and we just need to start taking care of those. I think this is a good idea, I just think it needs a lot of thought before we, we implement it. I think we need to know, you know, how we're going to take care of it. Because I know the budget problem you're having today, we don't need more taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you.
Ben, you spoke also about the, the Parks Master Plan. Is that even done? It's my understanding that that master plan for the parks is not even done yet. So yet here we are, going to introduce something that's, that's going to greatly affect it or enhance it.
The, we have an existing Parks Master Plan, it's being, it's being updated, and that's what you're alluding to, but there is an approved Parks Master Plan.
There is an approved Parks Plan, Master Plan.
Yes.
Do you have an answer for Commissioner Atkinson and Triani?
It was done in 95.
95.
Do you have an answer for Mr. Triani?
Yes, and that would be section I.
Section I.
Does it allow us to do what we want to do here?
And basically, what, what you want to do is identify green belts and, and-
I want to be able to enforce our master plan, and we're saying that we're going to take this 5% or take these monies from each of these new communities. And are we going to be able to enforce our overall scheme if we're relegated, or are we relegated to taking this acre or this 1.5 acres out of a, a tract that doesn't necessarily fit our plan?
Right. I would want to make it stronger. Commissioner, I read this, but you bring a good point, but we, we need to put a little bit more clearer language as to-
So then we need to update the language of this ordinance.
Yes.
You, you use this ordinance from Callan, or where did you get this?
No, no, mayor, this was done, looking at other ordinances, but, but basically drafted by our, by our department, myself and other staff. And also, I mean, this, we didn't do this in a vacuum. I did meet with, with Mr. Josie, our Assistant City Attorney, and I did talk to developers. And, and, and they gave me some, some comments. So, so I tried to be as, you know, go out and get as many comments as possible from-
So you can add language to where there's clarity as far as the 1.5 miles that we talked about earlier and putting the monies into a pool. And you can add a little stronger language to satisfy Mr. Triani's request there.
Mr. Goza, would you know what that language would be?
The what?
The language. And so we won't have another first reading? I mean, what would you recommend?
I'll just have to coordinate with you. I actually thought that, that the commission somehow either knew about these changes or at least wasn't opposed to these changes. The commission has the discretion of either passing the ordinance now, today, for the second time as it was passed originally the first time, or you can make whatever changes you want now and just read them out, and we will revise the ordinance to reflect your will and bring it back to you at the next meeting for the second final reading.
Could it pass and then have a workshop and we have to readdress, readdress?
Commissioner, why would we do that?
Well, I guess it's a little, I think it's a little complicated to, on the fly, adjust the ordinance. And, and I mean, if this is something that we want to implement as part of a master plan where it's integrated into the parks plan, then we need to do it more than just, "Hey, let's, let's change this right now." I mean-
I don't have a problem with adding the language that you want right now. I don't have any problem with that.
What is the language?
Or clarifying, clarifying the 1.5 radius there in the pool and the monies. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, you could increase the 1.5 to two miles, three miles.
Whatever the wishes of the commission. Commissioner Atkinson?
All I see is city manager and staff trying to take initiative to secure the city of Brownsville and its future with parks, coordinating with Imagine Brownsville. We're going to table this. All it gives is a chance for people to manipulate and to work. Commissioners over, I don't, I don't believe in that. This is something that's good, let's pass it. Our city manager wants it, let's do it. I want it, the people of Brownsville want this. But we, what we're going to do is, and I was there when I walked into, to Kabbler's office the other day, and they're both getting chewed out by, by a certain developer and threatening to sue, and, and, "I'm going to sue on the impact fee and on this." But when is enough enough, man? When are we going to start being commissioners instead of, and doing the right thing for the city instead of voicing, being voices for, for special interests?
Commissioner, you heard from the Parks Director that he had questions with the, with the actual ordinance, with the resolution. So you have a Parks Director saying, "You know what? Well, I just heard this over the phone. You know what? I don't, you know, I, I'm not going to say yay for this right now. Why don't you want, why don't we listen to the staff? I don't understand."
What are you saying? Be recognized.
Why can't we listen to the staff?
He doesn't give anybody a chance, Commissioner.
Let him finish speaking now. Commissioner Garza, go ahead.
Excuse me, Commissioner, sorry.
Really don't? Commissioner Garmadiel, Commissioner Garza, you want to say something?
I just go back. Mr. Kabbler says that he had, if Mr. Keller was not involved, that's his problem. The city manager has recommended this. These folks have been working on it for about a year.
Let him do his job.
Let him do his job. That's why we have a city manager, and I commend you, Mr. Kabbler.
Okay, let me ask you a question, Ben. Do you feel comfortable with this? Yes or no?
I feel comfortable with this at the time. I mean, I did get input from many people. What I would recommend, mayor, is that pass it, and then let me have a workshop at the next meeting, before the meeting, as a workshop. I'll work with them, and then if there's a fine tuning based, working with-
That's allowed, City Attorney?
And, yes, sir. It's allowed.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close public hearing? I'll move to close.
Well, you pass it, there's two readings.
No, no, well, he's, he's saying, do we, you say we should pass this resolution for the next meeting, or you want us to approve it, and then we'll have a workshop after it's approved?
Well, I mean, okay, approve it.
Work with me here on this.
Yes, approve it. But passing and approving may mean synonymous to some people, to me. But, but I'm saying approve it in first reading, let me have a workshop, and if there's something that really, really I cannot, I mean, working with, I will work with developers, I mean, we're open, we want to be, we don't want to work in a vacuum and with Mr. Goza. If there's something that's really, really, I mean, totally different, that's not, that's not being discussed here tonight, or it's not in the spirit of the, of the ordinance, then we will come back and ask you for a first reading. We, we would have to. But I don't think there'll be a lot of changes because working with the developers, they all say we need, that there's something that's needed for this community. They have, none of them have said no to parks.
Thank you.
None of them have said no to this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Garza. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor to oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Motion by, by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously, okay.
We're on item 12. Public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2007-1133-X, amending ordinance 86-1133 pertaining to a franchise contract between the city of Brownsville and Governmental Management Services, or known as GMS Incorporated, for collection and disposal of commercial and industrial solid waste, incorporating signed contract for all purposes, and amending the rates for containerized collection of commercial industrial solid waste and related matters as set forth in Exhibit A, establishing an increase of 3.43% as per Section 13.02A titled Modification of Rates to Reflect a Consumer Price Index Increase.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, the current rate, current contract that we have with GMS allows a CPI increase on an annual basis. So this ordinance includes the CPI increase.
What happens if we don't approve it?
We would, we would pay for that difference. It would come out of the general fund. If they don't get the increase, we would have to pay for their increase. So it's, in other words, it'll be an expense on our part.
Pete, why is this even on the agenda? These are things that are worked out contractually through the contract.
Because I'm also, since we are having problems balancing our budget, I have also included a 25-cent increase for the city's share on this ordinance that will generate-
CPI.
That will generate for us, let, let me go to the calculation, that would generate $90,000 for us. On this particular schedule that we have right now, we have the, on top, we have the O rate, which is 1943, and this is based on a two cubic yard container. If the CPI increase, which is 2.26%, is 42 cents. So that would go to, from 1943 to 1985. On the bottom of that schedule, we have an additional city add-on to the general five. We would go from 50 cents to 25 cents. If we include this particular 25 cents add-on to the city, the rate increase would be 3.43% We are recommending the, that 25 cent add-on. This is a public hearing, so it would generate 90,835 for us.
Can I ask a question? Because I really don't know that, that much about this issue as far as, when you did the contract with GMS, we signed a contract stating that within three, four years, that they can go up with the cost of living? Is that what it is? Is that a standardized contract or?
Actually, every year, and it's a, it's set by, it's, it's Consumer Price Index Report, it's not a number they make up.
No, I know that, but-
It's something we agreed to in the original contract each year, for each year.
It's good business because, I mean, everything goes up. The gasoline goes up.
But this is already contractually binding on us.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's kind of a non-issue as Commissioner Longoria was talking about.
The only thing that I'm adding is the 25 cents that-
It's because of the 25 cents that it's on the agenda.
Correct.
That's right.
Well?
This is a commercial, not residential.
So part of raising the taxes is going to be to pay GMS. Is that right? The 25%, 25 cents?
No, the 25 cents-
Maybe I'm getting it wrong.
Commissioner, we, we would keep 25 cents, which the overall rate increase would be It wouldn't have an add-on. And it's a public hearing, so.
How, did we have, did we negotiate the percent? 3.43, that's, that's a lot.
Commissioner, the only thing that's in the contract is the CPI. That's on very, on very top, 2.26%. That's the calculated CPI as of the latest month. That wouldn't, that would change the current base rate of 1943 to 1985. That's in the middle of the page, 1985. We are proposing that the new rate be 2010 instead of 1985, and this would generate 90,835.
It doesn't adversely affect the budget. Okay, got it. Okay, okay, this is a public hearing. Any questions?
Before we do close, I'd like just to make a, a comment to the representatives from GMS and thank them for their contributions that you make to our community. This is just cost of living for you and your employees and, and your businesses, and it's contractual. So, but I know that you all have helped us out in the community with various activities by putting out your, your trash containers and by helping out with the churches and helping all the other entities. So on behalf of myself, and I know a lot of the members of the city commission, thank you for all that help that you provide for this community. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it too.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I move to close public hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, and second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries to close. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Longoria makes a motion, uh, second by Commissioner Hackerson. All in favor?
Aye.
To approve, motion carries. Item 13.
Item 13, second, public hearing to discuss the proposed 2007 ad valorem tax rate, fiscal year 2008, of 65 cents, which is an increase of 4.95% over the effective tax rate of 61 cents, or an increase of 0.0434% over the current year's fiscal 2007 ad valorem tax rate of 65 cents per $100 valuation.
All right, Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is our second public hearing regarding the tax rate that the city is proposing for fiscal year 2008, and the, uh, rate is 65.0517 cents per $100 valuation, which is .04% above the current rate, which is very, very small increase.
Okay, but let's go back, Pete, with the .3 cents that was cut before the election there, how much money did we lose?
Well, right now, if you look at, uh, a penny generates half a million dollars, Mayor, so it would be, if you'd-
So a half million and a half.
1.5.
1.5 million dollars we lost, based on, on, on the cut, uh, tax cut rate there before the election. So, um, we have a shortage of 1.5 just on revenues from lowering that tax rate, is that right?
That's correct.
So we are lower than what we were before?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, can we have a motion, or is there opposition? Let me finish, please. Is there opposition, or is there favor? This is a public hearing.
If I may, I, I would also maybe update you on what we have done in the budget, since this is a related item.
Okay, um, before, before we do that, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, I just wanna state that you keep bringing up the fact that we lowered the tax rate, um, that was under Mayor Trevino, and of the majority of this commission that was here, um, each year's a different story, you know, and that was last year's budget. That's why we go through a budget process. We were able to give the citizens a tax break, so we did it. It, it's not what you keep saying, and, um, we listened to staff, and the staff, you know, recommends it, went along with it, but that's why we go through a budget process.
Staff didn't really recommend it.
Thank you for stating, I heard for, wait a second.
I know.
Let me respond, let, let me respond to that. First of all, I've heard from staff that did not recommend that, and second of all, this was not done through the budget process, this was a political move to cut it, cut it down for, for grandstanding. Okay, end of discussion.
Mayor, it was a political move, let me, no, let me make a comment. Yeah, we gotta move on, we keep bringing that up every meeting.
Okay, so we now have, this is a public hearing, um, I'm gonna introduce the Camille Playhouse, but we were, we are short 1.5 million based on that 3 cents cut, okay? Can I introduce Camille Playhouse, uh, here in, in this item, attorney, because somebody failed to put it up in the workshop?
If it pertains to the budget, the-
So, okay, I wanna give Camille Playhouse the opportunity to come forward, they have a presentation, they're prepared for a workshop, but for some reason they were left out, it was not done intentionally. Uh, Mr. Crowe, please state your full name, and, and, and I, and I, I appreciate everybody being patient and sitting through, through this, but it's good that you see your city government at work firsthand, too.
Uh, I'm Donald Crowe, I'm the president of the Camille Playhouse, and in view of the lateness of the hour, I'm gonna be very brief.
You have 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Please take it.
I will not use it all.
Good.
Um, it's very difficult to properly describe live theater with pictures and words. You nearly have to be there to see what it's like. Therefore, if you will look in the packages we gave you, there's a little DVD that was made from our summer program that will allow you to see what happened there. Um, I would respectfully request that you take a few minutes, this is very short, when you get home, to take a look at this. I think it would tell you a whole lot about what we do. You also have complimentary tickets in your packet, we would love for you to use them and come to some of our performances, to see what we actually do at the Camille. Uh, there's a schedule in there that tells you what we're doing this coming season. Choose a show, come be our guest. I sometimes get the feeling that there are some people who believe that all we do is produce musical, comedy, and dramas. This is very far from the truth. Through our summer workshops and our youth theater, we positively impact the lives of about 300 young people in Brownsville. Many of these, most of these, go back to their schools, become competitors in the UIL competitions, and because of the training, and the experience, and the discipline, they got at the Camille, they bring home the medals. Ask the school system. Our programs also feed the dark drama programs in the high school, St. Joseph, et cetera. We have a broad spectrum of people who come to our summer and youth theater productions. These kids go right back into the overall system, and they excel. Many of our young people, and I'm very proud of this, as a result of our programs, choose to go to college to learn performing arts and make this their career. Daniel Krynek, who presented here early this year, is doing exactly that. He is now at the University of Houston as a theater major. Through our main stage productions, which is what most people think we do, we bring live quality theater to a whole lot of people who might never otherwise have that experience. Not too many people in Brownsville are gonna be able to go to Dallas, or Fort Worth, or even San Antonio to see a live production, but they can come to Dean Porter Park and see one. We welcome them. From a financial standpoint, as a direct result of our shows, we bring people from all over the valley to Brownsville to see our productions. These people have dinner here, they buy gasoline here, in some cases, they spend the night here. That's money coming into Brownsville directly as a result of what we're doing. Personal aside there, I work in Harlingen, my boss was talking to me today, and he said, you know, every time we come down there to a show, it costs me a hundred bucks, because I have to feed my family, I usually have to feed the thirsty SUV I drive, and so I can figure a hundred dollars to come see one of your shows, but it's damn well worth it. I think that was the best thing I've heard. On the rare occasions when our stage is not busy, it's used by local dance studios and other groups for their performances, we also, in cooperation with the Children's Museum, provide a venue for their theater performances during their Children's Day at the park. Um, we enjoy this, we have a lot of fun doing it, and it provides their performers a darn good place to put on their show, rather than being on a platform outside. This is provided at no cost. Our De Stefano Room is used for meetings of various organizations, for receptions, and for many other functions, and if we have our way, it's gonna get used for a bunch more. In short, we are active, living participant in our community, many ways, and as our city grows, we want to grow and adapt and provide even more services. But the simple fact is, this requires money. We have many fundraising activities, you're benefiting from some of them, uh, the cookies, the glass that's in your packet, were the items we sold during the summer program. We raised about $3,000 doing this. That's $3,000 into our budget. There you are, that was what we were selling. Uh, I had, I never wanna see them again, because I got to see those every morning about 5 o'clock for quite a few weekends, but, uh, they were very profitable. We solicit sponsorships, we actively solicit grants, they're getting harder and harder to come by, because there are more and more people asking for them. The simple fact is, just like the museum, if we are to survive, if we are to continue what we're doing, we're gonna have to have some money. Simple fact of life. We need your support, we need the financial support of the city. Every city famous for its quality of life has a thriving cultural system, including a good, live theater. I cannot stress that amount enough. San Antonio, Houston, Corpus Christi, to get close to us, Harbor Theater and Corpus is our sister theater, they were both built by the Sam's Foundation within a few years of each other. The Harbor Theater is heavily supported by the City of Corpus Christi, uh, to the extent of probably 300, last time I talked to them, it was about $300,000 a year. We're not that greedy, we're asking for a hundred thousand from the city to supplement what we raise and what we are able to obtain from grants. Let's work together to make Brownsville the city it can be. Thank you for your time, I salute your patience on these long meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Any questions you have, I will be happy to answer.
Commissioner, any questions? Okay, let me point something out, uh, before Pete gets started here. Historically, the most that the Camille Playhouse has received in cash is $25,000. Uh, there's, in 2005, it dropped to 13,000. I strongly believe we must invest in our cultural entities, and I'm asking this commission to seriously, seriously weigh this, because if we're gonna evolve as a community, we need to invest in ourselves. We can't continue to ignore them. We should look to solve the problems that these citizens come to us with, that's what we're here for. You are, and I am, their voice, and they're asking to be heard, and I think, if we go back all the way to 2000, 25,000 is not gonna cut it. And I, I think each one has made a good presentation, and I think we should grant their request. Now, go ahead, Pete, you gonna do the presentation of the budget based on their request, including their, in, in your budget?
Yes, this particular schedule shows some of the changes that have been made to the budget, well, the budget that was filed at the City Secretary's Office on August the 17th. Uh, there are some additions to various departments, but there's also reductions to certain departments, which will have the net effect of $1 or minus. And the legal department, uh, there were, uh, position that was added, uh, that's an additional 35,000 to 77. We had an adjustment for the Assistant City Attorney. There were some, two positions in Channel 12 that were originally, uh, recorded at the library department, uh, the, uh, library director indicated to us that he was having problems hiring librarians, librarians, uh, require, they, 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 one of the requirements is they must have a, a master's degree, and the starting salary for a librarian was 38,000, he wanted to adjust those to 42,000. With the understanding, he was told, okay, we'll go ahead and go along with your request with the understanding that you do reductions in other line items in, within your budget. So we went ahead and transferred some of the monies, uh, positions that were in the library, moved it up to Channel 12. And the reason why this is done is because by law, state law, requires us to, of the total library budget, 25% must be earmarked for book purchases. Since we reduced the library budget by 165,974, that allow us to reduce the book purchases of the library. To make a long story short, that, that was, that, that was accomplished by actually, uh, increasing the salaries of the librarians from 38 to 42,000 without increasing the bottom line of both departments, be it Channel 12 or the library. And then there were some other additional two streets, that's very minor, and we also included, uh, a youth recreation, uh, position. Uh, we also allocated, uh, 40,000 for the old city cemetery project, and we decreased the 16,000 that was allowed for Los Caminos del Rio Heritage. So the net effect of that was really almost nil, zero, I show a dollar minus. Uh, during the, uh, last week, we also discovered, based from the police department, that there were some additional French benefits that were somehow omitted in the police department, so this is an additional expense that we're gonna add to the budget of 66,576. Mayor Amada also requested that, we looked at ways of having the entry level for beginning salaries for city employees from, I, the, I think that the entry level right now is 8.03, to move it up to 850 and, and find out how much of a cost, additional costs this would be, and I'll go over this later, cause I have a different schedule. Uh, the net effect was 18,822, so-
Can I ask you a real quick question on that? If you take an entry level position to 850, that's not taking into account the matrix, is it? In other words-
Does everybody move up?
Yeah. You're not gonna give a raise to anybody else, so somebody who's been there for a couple of years-
I'm gonna go over that, Commissioner, if you allow me, um, I'm, I'm gonna cover that also.
But right now, you're addressing the entry level, and even then, at that entry level, how, first of all, how many employees are affected by this?
Let me skip, okay.
How many?
And, and still, the 850, they're, they're still below poverty level.
Sir, I guess to answer, uh, both you and, and Commissioner Longoria, uh, we have currently 44 employees making 8.0359%. If we go to the 850, uh, the, the increase would be 5.78%. We have 45 employees at the rate of 827.69, here's where, you were, I guess to answer your question, those, those employees making 827.69 would go to 864.94, or a 4 point, and a half, 4.5% increase. Then you have 35 employees, uh, currently earning 8.3585, that would go to 8.71337, which would have an increase of 4.25%. So there's three levels that are, that are affected, Commissioner, uh, Longoria. Going back to the schedule, um, it shows, we also, uh, there's some additional expenditures that were proposed by Mayor Amada, and that's, that's to increase, and this is all funds, uh, being funded by the general fund, uh, 275,000 for the, uh, Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, 300,000 for Gladys Porter Zoo, and 100,000 for Camille Playhouse. So the total, if you include the 85,388, and the minus a dollar, plus the additional 675,000, we would be adding an additional expenses to the budget in the general fund by that amount. This is the budget that is currently filed at, at the, uh, City Ma, City Secretary's Office. If you look at the latest proposed budget there, as of, uh, August the 17th, the fund balance, uh, or the deficit, rather, uh, between, uh, in 2008, shows a 1.3 million dollar budget deficit, a beginning fund balance of, in October, of 11,164,139. Now, we all know that the balance, fund balance as of October 31st, excuse me, October 1st, is, it's an estimated fund balance based on what is on our current 2007 budget, which is 11,164,139. We know very well that that number of 11,164,139 would be a larger, once the, uh, all the revenues and expenses are recorded for fiscal year 2007, that, I estimate right now that the fund balance based on current expenses and current revenues could be close to 13 million at the end of fiscal year 2007. So let's say 2 million dollars more than what we estimate right now for 2007. So if, if that's the case, uh, based on what was filed at the City Secretary's Office, we have 11.72% available in reserves. Now, what does this do to the changes that are being proposed, uh, as of September 4th, tonight? I would have to increase revenues, because we, you did, even though you, the second reading hasn't been approved, but tonight you approved 90,000 more to be added to the revenues, uh-
Pete, you've added things onto this budget that haven't been approved by a second reading, and I understand, and so that you can prepare the budget.
I, I, Commissioner, I just mentioned, if the second reading gets approved, it's not included in here, Commissioner. The 90,000 dollar increase that would, we would generate from the commercial garbage accounts is not in the budget yet. It's not. It's not. I have not added that. If the second reading is approved on our next meeting, then we would increase the budget by, in the revenue side, by $90,000. Going back to the expenses, uh, we have added, uh, additional expenses that I just covered with you on the first schedule of 700 and, got to go back, of 760,000, 397. That increases the, the, the deficit by that amount, by 760,000, 760,000, which will now have, this is the way our, our, our budget, general fund budget would look at, would look right now, if everything that, that has been proposed, uh, the, uh, we have a deficit of 2,61,0592. Again, we're using reserves, uh, to, to, uh, balance the budget and the-
So we're dipping into our reserves?
Yes. The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
We did last year, too, right?
Yeah.
You, you all did.
Excuse me, sir?
You all did, last year.
Yeah. But we always retain that 15%, right? Are, are we going to be able to maintain that 15%?
We probably will be at the end of this fiscal year. I don't know about next fiscal year, Commissioner, it's hard to say.
Okay, what happens with that if we're not, if we don't hold that 15%?
They said we would.
Our bond consult.
No, I'm, he's asking about 2008, Commissioner, and 2008 is, uh-
What happens to our bond rating? I guess that's my question.
Well, we, every time we, uh, we issue debt, Commissioner, one of the main things that we tell the rating agencies is that we are going to maintain, or that's our plan, to maintain at least 15% of reserves, and, and that's been our goal, and we've-
Are we going to be able to maintain that?
I don't know, Commissioner. For 2008, I don't know.
But you know, he always plays it safe.
Yeah.
And also, that wasn't a concern when they dipped into the budget last year in the reserves, and when they cut the three cents, that was not a concern.
It's always been-
But right now, what we're looking at is meeting the needs of these entities that are desperately in need of it, to, for operation and maintenance, okay? I purposely left the pit budget out, because I don't want you all to make that an issue. This is completely excluding that, so I'm hoping you will consider those amendments that I requested to meet their needs, because they are part of our community, and they do need the money, and they justified it here. And without them, there's no medieval cultural district, right?
Mayor, now, with, with the proposed budget, that's just for one year, or is this something that we're going to include for-
This is a one-time, uh, thing for this year, and hopefully next year, we'll find, I tried to address it in a different way earlier, that failed, but I will continue to try and find alternative ways. Right now, because the budget is here, uh, I would like to address it, this one-time proposal, to fund them, and for us, as, as a commission, to look for ways, for alternative ways to address it next year. But we gotta address it. We cannot let them down.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's a one-time deal.
It's, it's a one-time deal.
One-time deal.
But it was a one-time deal for the Boys Club. It's a one-time deal for the museums this time. Who's it going to be a one-time deal for next year?
Yeah, but that's a good, a Boys Club. Boys, Boys Club went under.
And so did our money.
I know, but are we going to let them go under? And that's a legitimate concern, but let me tell you something. In good faith-
We don't have a Boys Club in Brownsville.
Let me address that.
Smallest cities have Boys Clubs.
In good faith, this is a one-time deal, but let me tell you something, next year, if they're going to close the doors, I'm going to bring it back, and then we decide it then. But I'm not going to let them close the doors. I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm going to listen to their voices and address their needs. This year, we're working on this budget. Next year, when it comes back, if it's still a concern, then we debate it, and hey, if fails, we're passes. But we, as commissioners, as, as representatives of them, we need to hear their voices and address their concerns, and I'm asking for this one-time deal. That's what I'm asking for. They never come here before. Look at this. 25,000 at the most Camille Playhouse to 21,250 consistently. The, the, the zoo, they started out with 20%, where the city contribution was when they opened the doors, and they're down to 7.9%, I believe it is, it's come down. The Brownsville Fine Arts, I mean, you know, they, they cut their, their employees some, and they cut their salaries 50%, and their debt is high because of the new building, and they're bringing, they're making the sacrifice themselves to keep it going, so I mean, how can we let them down? If they're doing everything they can themselves, we can't turn our backs on them. I think we have the money, let's do it. That's what the reserves are for, this is a one-time deal, and we'll address the other concerns, it's not going to bankrupt this. I remember when Pete can tell you here.
I know.
We, when I, in 1990s, we had a $53,000 reserve reported, and that was funny numbers because that wasn't there. We had a projected deficit of $3 million. There was no reserve, right, Pete? Right? I mean, so I mean, if we have a hurricane, those reserves are wiped out. So I mean, that's what the reserves are for, for, in case of emergency or in case of, of need that we need to address, because we don't have the money right now. We lost 1.5 million dollars with less three cents. If we had the one, with those three cents, we, we wouldn't have to raise taxes, we could address that. So we don't have it, so let's dip it to the reserves and make up for it, for not having it.
I concur.
Oh, item 14.
Mayor, and I support all the, all these projects and all these, uh, organizations. I just got to be physically responsible, and we got to ask tough questions, because we're going through a budget process, but if you're okay with it, Pete-
No, I'm not.
We're-
I'm not. I'm just going with what's being presented. If you're asking me, absolutely not. You're asking-
He's never, Pete's never, he's, he's not, he's, he's never for it, because I mean, that's his position, and I understand, and I understand, and I told Pete when we met privately, hey, you have to speak your mind.
Yes.
And I told him that.
Would you please?
The answer is no.
No, would you please speak your mind? What are, what are you against?
I certainly don't recommend it.
Why?
That's my answer.
Why?
We don't, I don't like to dip into reserves that much.
Okay, but-
And the reason why, Commissioner, is because sales tax, one of the important revenue sources that the city gets, is that sales tax. Last allocation that the city got was zero increase. The budget that we have right now in sales tax calls for a 5% increase. We are, we, we have to be very careful with our revenues, especially in the sales tax calculations, because it, I've seen in the past, sales tax, and I don't think we're going to see that reduction, but in, in the passage of devaluation, and we're not going to see this again, but I have seen this in the past. In 1982, our pass, our sales tax went down 33%. It took se- and I repeat this regularly, it took us seven years to recover. Luckily, we had revenue sharing, and we had anti-recession funds during those years. Those funds are gone. In, in, in the year, uh, two, I might have to go back, 2001, 1994, there was another passage of devaluation that it took us three years to recover, so I have seen reductions-
So that's your scare, your what ifs.
Hmm?
That's your scare, the what ifs.
Well, you're asking me, Commissioner, I'm giving you my answer.
Sorry, last year, when we dropped it 3%, you weren't really for that either. You did it because the mayor was hounded you and hounded you and hounded you to drop taxes.
Okay, let me answer that question.
And we did it, yes, it benefited the people, but you weren't really with it.
Commissioner, let him answer. It doesn't matter.
I, I don't think that's, that's correct.
You're going to be against this now.
Vote for it.
Let's have some order here. First of all, the finance director is certainly entitled to his opinion.
I don't want you to ca- I don't want to come back in.
We value, we value your opinion, okay? He gave you opinion, uh, uh, finance director, and we appreciate it. And Commissioner, of course, you also, we all have our opinion. The, 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 the bottom line is, we're still going to have healthy reserves, uh, uh, finance director. We're still going to have, we're not broke, okay? And we can't afford it one, okay? And it's still less, it's still less at the one point than the three cents that we have to make up. It's still less, okay? So, based on that-
We're still pending Me Too.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're still pending the Me Too.
Well, we're spending, yeah, there's a lot, we could have a hurricane tomorrow, too, you know? So I mean, if you want to live in doomsday, if we want to live in doomsday and not address anything, or meet the needs of people, and, or their, or their, or their, or their, or the entities that are so vitally important to this community, maybe to some of us it's not, because we don't go, we don't do this, or whatever, but there is a, 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 a section of the community that is depending on us to address their concerns, and they have a right to have those concerns addressed, especially after years and years that nobody's ever even taken a look at it.
We, we have a responsibility to safeguard our landmarks, man. The zoo's our landmark, we're known-
No, we're not, it's not.
Okay, we're not?
We got accreditation, we got an accreditation, uh, situation coming up with the zoo. I want it to be at the highest standard possible, and I want to give them the resources to, to make sure that we maintain our accreditation. Loss of accreditation would cost us millions of dollars. Would that be right?
Loss of accreditation would, uh, cause us not to be able to participate in a lot of programs for endangered species, get a lot of the animals we need for our-
Grants?
We go through that at BASD every year.
Out of, uh, 2,000 organizations that have a card.
Come up here, thank you. This is a one-time deal, gentlemen.
And we're not raising taxes, right?
And we're not raising taxes.
There are over 2,000 facilities in the United States that have the word zoo in their name. There are 200 facilities accredited by our National Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and with that accreditation comes the ability to get state and federal permits for endangered species, to be able to move animals, uh, from one state to another state, from one zoo to another zoo, and without that accreditation, uh, we'll lose more than the elephants. How's that?
Thank you. You brought it. Okay, this is a public hearing.
Mayor, excuse me, we are undergoing our accreditation process to, if there are any questions, we're gonna discuss-
I understand that. I encourage-
We're going through KISD as teachers.
And I encourage all of you to go meet with these people. I mean, I've met with them, and I've gone firsthand, it's not, I'm bringing something to you out of the, the sky, I've taken the time to go meet with them. I understand their needs, I wish, uh, more people would go.
Maybe it's because it's you.
Well, may, maybe because it's me.
It's not because it's him, Charlie, don't take that low blow either.
Okay, but this is a public hearing, can we close the public hearing and, and, and adopt the proposals I submitted, okay? That's based on the proposals I submitted. So move by Commissioner Atkinson, second by Commissioner Garza?
I made the motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor? This is with the, with the proposed, uh, changes I asked you for, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
How many nays? Raise your hands.
Four.
Okay, four. Okay, I'm sorry, John, I tried.
We're not, we're not done yet, we're still looking at-
Talk about grandstanding, man.
No, well, hey-
We're still looking at them, and that doesn't mean that it-
What are we doing as a, as a commission to, you have an alternative, bring it. I've always said that. If you have an alternative, address it. Take the time to go meet with them. Have you taken the time to go meet with them? Have any of you taken the time to go meet with them? Have any of you gone, taken the time? See, it's easy to knock something down, but hey, bring the solution.
Well, I think you're trying to win here, uh, nicely.
It, it's mind-boggling. It is mind-boggling. I'm asking this commission to reconsider. The nays, you have an opportunity right here to bring it back right now.
You know, Mayor, we can come back and look at a different amount-
Right now, this is the time, you, the nays can come back right now. Do you want to reconsider, yes or no?
I want to know that. He proposed X numbers up there, can we alter that to avoid too much from the general fund?
Commissioner, we can have another meeting next week. This budget doesn't get, is not scheduled for approval until September the 17th. There are, there is time.
We can adjust, we can adjust the numbers, correct?
Right.
You know, I think what it is, is Commissioner Atkinson said, you know, paddle my proposals, so they got to find a way to kill it, or they got to find a way to make it, you know, that's sad, and that's shameful.
That's grandstanding on your part.
No, that's shameful.
You're accusing us of grandstanding, you're grandstanding.
It is a good proposal, Commissioner. That's okay, I'm grandstanding.
It's a very good proposal.
Mayor, that's not leadership.
Item 14. You all had all this time to prepare for this meeting.
Item 14.
You all had this time to prepare for this meeting, you don't even take the time.
Oh, we prepare.
Yeah, sure you do.
Item 14, consideration and action to announce that a public hearing will be held on September 17th, 2007, at City Hall at 6:00 PM, to adopt by resolution the fiscal year 2008 budget, to approve the first reading of an ad valorem tax ordinance establishing the 2007 ad valorem tax rate, and to approve the second reading of the 2007 ad valorem tax rate ordinance on September the 18th, 2007.
All right, Mayor, President, City Commission, this is just for you to take action tonight to announce that there will be a public hearing on September 17th, 2007, to adopt the budget by resolution, along with the first reading of setting the ad valorem tax rate for the coming fiscal year, and this two dates are September 17th and September the 18th.
Okay, this consideration action items, a move by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16.
So move to approve. Everybody knows Sombra Festival. They did a great job, they're part of Brownsville.
Second.
I don't think they need a presentation.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Sizcano, seconded by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 17.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Item 17, consideration and action to approve Class L permit number CL 2007-001 to allow a game arcade at 344 Paladis Line Road, Brownsville, Texas.
What kind of arcade would this be?
This is a, a game machine arcade, the slot machine-
We'll not pay cash.
Well, hopefully not.
We can't give permits, we can't give permits for illegal activities.
Yes, right.
We're supposed to.
But in this case, they're, they're not-
Supposed to be for giveaways.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mayor and City Commissioners, the planning department is charged with reviewing the site plan of, of arcades, and this is a special permit, it's what we call a Class L. In this particular case, the applicant located in this location is utilizing an existing building that will install 25 machines, hire four employees, and their hours of operation will be 10:00 AM to 2 P, um, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And, uh, they're located at 344 Paladis Line Road, uh, it's an old pronto store, um, we reviewed the site plan, and there is a, a site plan in your pocket, and we'll put it up on the screen. We look at landscaping, uh, parking spaces, uh, making sure that the, uh, surrounding is buffered by, by fencing. Uh, they comply with that, the required zoning, fourth commercial, in this case, they have higher zoning, they have seventh commercial. So this is the site plan, staff recommends approval.
The stack of, staff's recommendation is approval?
Yes, sir.
How many arcades do we have in Brownsville already?
I cannot answer that question, sir. I'm sorry. The city secretary is in charge of, of giving the licenses for the machines.
Coin operator, I don't have the figures, but last count, uh, was about 1,500.
Machines.
Okay, then, you and I met before this meeting, and I discussed my concerns within this, that are we issuing permits for somebody to do some illegal, uh, gambling, okay? You assured me that this is the first one under the new rules, okay? Under the new rules. My concern, chief, we have a chief of police here, Carlos Garcia here, my concern is, are we opening the door here under the premise that it's legal, they're going to give out teddy bears, and can it sustain itself by giving teddy bears without getting into the illegal arena, okay?
Ben, is it fair to say, I give you a permit to sell alcohol on your premises if you decide to sell to minors?
Right, I, I think that's a good analogy.
It's your-
Yeah, we're, we're doing it in good faith and-
But are we creating a problem for our police? That's what I want to make sure we're not doing, because I know you got plenty of other things to address and-
Mayor, Mayor, City Commission, uh, we already have that problem.
Correct.
Okay? There's gaming, uh, places out there that have been issued permits, and we have the intelligence that they are paying cash. Not all of them, but the majority of them are.
Because in good faith, the permits are being issued, and those permits are being used for illegal activity.
The permits are issued in good faith, you know, they come in applying in good faith, or at least they, they, they say they do, but we know through our intel and through But we know through our intel and through undercover investigations, and we've done this in the past where we closed down the arcades, that Cameron County District Attorney's Office is currently working on numerous investigations. And that's, I mean, you're going to survive by paying cash. You're not going to survive by giving out teddy bears, toilet paper, or soap or dish.
So you're against it?
I definitely am against it.
Thank you.
Because it just creates more work for us.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, this is an action item. Any further discussion?
Hold on.
Mrs. McGowan?
What?
Don't tell me you're the owners of the... Don't tell me.
We're in this...
They play.
They play.
I was going to say, don't tell you're opening a game.
Steinbach and Mary McGowan.
Mary McGowan. No, we own the building. We have All-Star Realtors right next door. And the parking, it would be horrendous.
Okay, so you're against it?
I'm definitely against it.
I'm glad to see you here. Good to see you.
Well, there's parking on our land and our parking hall is long and all night. You see, we share the parking lot. It's used as a street, but it's a private parking between the two buildings.
We're moved to deny.
And there's not enough room. And if it's an arcade, my gosh, you know, we'd never be able to park.
Our customers will have a place to park.
Yeah.
Unless we can make our parking, you know, no...
Well, we can't make our parking private and they can't either because we have to back up. And that goes into...
Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for letting us know you're against it, okay? This is a consideration action item. Anybody else want to say anything?
Ben, what's the required parking spots for a place like this? If they're referring to the parking?
In this particular case, they have 13. That was checked by our zoning officer and checking with the building permitting. It's required. I do not know...
Two for...
Two spaces per machine.
And they have... Who wants to step up?
They're proposing 25 machines and they provided 13 spaces, which is...
One space for two machines.
I mean, I'm sorry, one space for... Two spaces per machine and they want to put 25, so the...
Maybe 50 for every space.
50 parking slots.
Yeah.
Two for every space.
Two machines for every space.
Spaces for every machine.
Right, so that's 50.
No.
Two machines for every space.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
That would be 12 and a half.
Are those 12 spots affecting the ladies' business?
Not according to our site plan or the site plan that they have right there. They're within the boundaries of the property.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. But I think we should listen to our chief of police.
Yes, Mayor, and this is a Class L and the reason why this ordinance was developed, and this is the first applicant going through this process, because it was developed because, you know, of all the activity that was happening with arcades. But in this particular case, one of the requirements is that you could deny this case based on the fact that it's within 200 feet. And that's something that's part of the...
Based on the fact of what?
That's within 200 feet of a residential area. And that's one of the conditions that it has to come before you, is not only the zoning but also distances, just like alcohol ordinance would do. But that's your setting that policy.
I'm going to move to deny.
Well, hold on a second. I mean, by statute, gaming machines are allowed and by statute, we can have a permit to obtain this type of business in our community. The question you're raising is that it's too close to a residential community.
Right.
Or a residential subdivision. And then the other issue was possibly the number of parking spaces.
But they're recommending... Are they complying?
They're complying with that.
But with the 200 feet from the residential neighborhood?
They're recommending it, right?
Well, he's saying that there's also another issue, which would be its location next to the residential subdivision.
Within 200 feet of residences.
Let me clarify. Commissioner Atkinson, I think you're confused.
You put this on to approve it though, right? Just, right?
Well, no.
You didn't even give it up to us.
The process is that people have to apply, it has to come before you. What we do is we approve the site plan. You have to take into consideration distances from residential areas, which is part of the ordinance. In this case, they're within 200 feet of the area, of the game, of the arcade. That's one condition. But other than that, they comply with the site plan. And that's our requirement, is that for us to make sure that proper landscaping, proper parking spaces are there for this type of...
But it's a compliance in parking. It's a compliance in the site plan. It's approved by zoning.
No, the concern that there is is... It doesn't go to PNC, it just comes directly here.
Okay. The concern is it's within 200 feet of single-family residential area and the concern of the chief of police that it could be used for illegal activity.
Well, Mayor, you can say that it's a concern that the potential owners aren't here either.
Yeah, they're not even here.
I'm going to second Commissioner...
That's suspicious in itself.
You've got to say this motion.
Motion by Commissioner Garza and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo to deny.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 18.
I'm going to put on the record nay for that, but...
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Oh, then it doesn't pass.
How many nays? How many nays? How many nays?
Well, because I don't think...
Because the motion was to deny, so...
I understand the motion is deny and I'm saying...
He said aye, it's understood, it's a nay, but everybody's a nay, right? Okay, it's all nays. The motion was for denying, okay? You got what you wanted. Okay, item 18, please.
No, she didn't.
She didn't.
It was four against his denial, so technically it didn't...
It passed.
It passed.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, item 18.
Item 18. Consideration in action to award a three-year auditing professional service contract to a local independent certified public accounting firm.
Oh, Mayor, members of the City Commission, we sent out proposals to all the CPA firms in Brownsville. Only two local CPA firms submitted proposals. That was Long Shilton and Patilla Brown and Hill. Both firms are highly experienced in auditing local governments. As required, as is requiring our proposal, both firms submitted fees for a three-year audits. And along with your packet, there's a memo from me addressing some of the issues that were, along with the fees. There was a committee set up, the Audit Committee, heard presentations from both firms, Long Shilton, as well as representatives from Patilla Brown. Based on those proposals that were heard by the Audit Committee, there were scores, it was a score sheet that was used. And the base, I guess, based on that, we, the committee had ranked or gave Long Shilton an average score of 8.84, 8.84 out of 10, and Patilla Brown and Hill, 8.28 out of 10. Now, there are some members of the Audit Committee, in case you want to ask questions regarding this issue.
I mean, who was the lowest bidder?
The...
Patilla.
The low bid was Patilla Brown. The average yearly fee is around $8,287.
So the difference was like not even, not even 8.4 and 8.2 as far as ratings?
Yeah, that's what the committee rated them, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, it is so close, you know? .84 and .28. And if Patilla was like, how, 10,000, 24,000 less?
They really averaged, so 8,287, that's what...
How much?
$8,000.
8,000 to 87.
8,287.
Overall, for the three-year period, it's 24,860, what I got here, difference. Is that right? For the three-year period?
Three-year period, Long Shilton, 180, and this again, I can go year by year. 2007, Long Shilton, 60,400. Patilla Brown, 52,900. Second year, or 2008, Long Shilton, 61,580. Patilla Brown, 52,900. Fiscal year 2009, 61,580 for Long Shilton and 52,900 for Patilla Brown. If you average those on a yearly basis, it's about 8,287 difference.
24,000 for the whole deal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the three years, 24,000.
If you add them up, yes.
If you add all three up, it's about $24,000. The other question was, is there was an issue as to independence of Patilla? And was that ever addressed? I know that that was something that we had talked about.
I'm going to ask Joe, our internal auditor, he did some research on that. Joe, you want to comment on that, please?
We're talking about the independence.
State your name, please, Joe.
I send a...
Your name, please. Pardon? Your name, your full name.
My name's Joe Chavez, I'm the internal auditor. I send an email to the Coscos firm and they replied...
And just for clarification, the Coscos firm is Carlos Coscos, the county judge, and he's with Patilla, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And as you recall, I think I sent an email to the...
I didn't get mine because I didn't have access to my email, but that's okay. You can tell me here, what you sent.
And basically, I did some research and I called the AICPA and they told me that according to the AICPA standards...
Please, I know using an acronym, but for the layman here, what's AGPA?
AICPA.
AICPA.
The American Institute of Certified Public Accountants.
Okay.
And they mentioned that if an accounting firm is going to do a governmental audit, basically, they have to go into a higher standard, which is independent in fact and in appearance. So...
And what was their determination based on the circumstances that we have here?
Well, based on their determination, they said that because Mr. Coscos was the judge, there was an independence issue.
Okay, so there would have been appearance or an actual in fact issue?
Actually, it was the independence in appearance issue.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
So there's a conflict of interest or what?
Yeah. Actually, there's no...
Because all it is, is that we share a bridge with the county. We never see that money come in. It's generated, it's just brought before the city, same way they do it at the county.
Well, it kind of looks like you might hire your brother-in-law to be your, you know, city manager. It kind of looks like that.
But what does that have to do with the bridge and what the bridge brings in? Torani?
It has to do with what kind of appearance we're going to have as a community and what kind of face do we want to put on this? And do we want to have problems and have to cross that road down the way? Or do we want to just go from the get-go and say, well, we don't want to have that kind of issue?
Well, aren't they the law firm at, or the public accounts at PUB?
Well, does that also raise another issue?
Well, I mean, are they... What are you talking about?
Well, I mean, once you start...
But your issue's not...
Well, no, it becomes a question of does it start to look incestuous?
No, man. It's owning the bridge together. That's all it is. How do...
And we do, and we collect revenues together.
Exactly.
And that's exactly...
Well, what is the attorney general?
I'm not going to tell you when or the other, but, you know, the county bridge is audited by Long Shilton, right? So when they do the audit for the city, they're receiving their own audit also.
That's correct.
Okay? So, I mean, is there independence there?
Yeah.
I'm just asking. Is there independence? I mean, they're receiving, they're verifying their own audit. I don't see a problem, I don't see a problem with it as far as that's concerned. But I don't know if it's anything similar or anything.
What I was trying to do is I was actually trying to research some cases, but there really isn't any case...
To me, they're both good. Whatever the commission wishes, I scored them both high. I mean, to me, it's...
Well, I'd move to close.
Second. It's not a public hearing, it's an approval.
Okay, so...
I made the motion to approve, Long and Shilton.
Second.
We are motion by Commissioner Camarillo to approve Long and Shilton and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Item 19. Consideration in action to...
They're both good. I mean, I don't want anybody reading anything into this, okay?
Item 19. Consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of two hydraulic in-ground transit vehicle lifts for the Brownsville Urban System.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, at request of Bus Director Norma Zamora, the Purchasing and Contract Services Department solicited bids for the replacement of two non-working in-ground hydraulic vehicle lifts at the bus transit facility. Purchasing and Contract Services advertised locally with a heading invitation for bids for the purchase and delivery and installation of two bus hydraulic lifts at the Brownsville Urban System, July the 8th and the 15th. A pre-bid conference was held on July 25th at the Purchasing Conference Room at 3:00 with a representative present. Request for one-week bid extension was asked for and was approved. On August 15th, 07, the 2:00 bids were publicly opened at the Purchasing Conference Room. There were four bids. These four bids were all responsive and contained the necessary documentation. And upon tabulation and review by staff and members of the Review Committee, it was determined that the lowest and most advantageous bid for purchase, delivery, and installation of the two new vehicle in-ground lifts was a bid submitted by Burton Auto Supply of Brownsville at a cost of $76,920.60. Staff recommends that bid be awarded to them.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 20.
Item 20. Consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of two Type II paratransit vans for the Brownsville Urban System.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, at request of Bus Director Norma Zamora, the Purchasing and Contract Services Department obtained a Texas Building and Procurement Commission proposal for acquisition of two Type II narrow-body paratransit vans for addition to the city's fleet. The current fleet of transit vehicles is comprised of 26 fixed route vehicles, 13 paratransit demand response vehicles, and 11 admin and service vehicles. These additional paratransit vans will be used to upgrade an existing fleet of 13 vehicles in order to serve a growing population of demand response users. These two paratransit vehicles will be floor planned to carry 46 amatory and two wheelchair citizens on a lift-equipped 10,000 gross vehicle weight Ford 350. Sections 271 of the Local Government Code, VTCAs, Section 2155 and 2175 of the Texas Government Code, Title 10, provide the legal authority for the following entities to participate in the Texas Building and Procurement Commission co-op. Staff recommends the following. Consideration action to approve a contract for purchase for two two thousand eight model Star Trans type-two paratransit vans for bus to Texas Bus Sales of Houston in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand nine sixty via the Texas Building and Procurement Commission. Funds for this are budgeted.
Approve?
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Sizneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All in, motion carries. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twenty-one?
Item twenty-one, consideration in action to award a term contract for security services for the City of Brownsville facilities.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, in conjunction with multiple department directors, the Purchasing Department solicited formal seal proposals for this project. It's the intent of the city into, to enter into term contracts with security firms to provide multi-level security services for city facilities. Heretofore, there has not existed a comprehensive agreement to unify security services for all city departments. The exception would be that in two thousand and two, we bid out a security service contract for the airport, and that contract expires the end of September. Each department has been charged with the responsibility to solicit informal quotes to secure services respective to their particular needs. Best practice, best practices dictate, however, that we go through a solicitation process and have a contract awarded by this body. Staff from the Purchasing Department has invested considerable time auditing the specific requirements of the city's twenty-plus departments to determine what levels of security are needed. In doing so, staff has solicited services divided into ten main categories that will be available for the departments to pick and choose from the menu of eligible services that suit their needs. Additionally, there will be alternate levels of service that can be added temporarily from time to time as the need arises. The selected ser- security services firms will be responsible for providing properly-equipped, uniformed security guards consisting of motor patrol and onsite guards at various city locations. Locations and level of services may be added or deleted at the discretion of the city during the term of this contract. The technical proposals and the cost component proposals were received for the subject project on January twenty-third, two thousand and seven at the Purchasing Department. Total of seven proposals were received and acknowledged. Cost component proposals were certified and stored securely until the cost component proposal opening. An evaluation committee was formed consisting of department heads with security service requirements as well as emergency management and Homeland Security Department representation. The cost component submittal was publicly opened and read aloud on January thirtieth, two thousand and seven. On June eighteenth, evaluation score sheets were electronically submitted via internet by the Evaluation Committee members. Purchasing staff conducted an analysis of the highest-ranked firms. The three highest-ranked firms were invited to make oral presentations on June twenty-second to fully detail their respective firm's strengths and levels of service that could be provided. After the presentations, the three firms were further evaluated. The two highest-ranked firms were invited to submit the best and final offer. On submission of respective best and final offers, staff negotiated independently with each firm to arrive at a more favorable rate schedule. As a result of the negotiation process, a working agreement with favorable rates was reached. The determination was made that it would be in the city's best interest to contract with two independent firms. The rationale for this is that while each of the firms meet all published criteria, past experience with the firms demonstrated that each have their respective strengths. It's important to note that both firms are incumbent contractors with the city. Respective departments wish to stay with their current firms. So, final negotiations allow for this to occur. In other words, by going through the solicitation process, we eliminate some departments going out for quotes and issuing purchase orders over and over again, and some departments going through a bid process. We've gone through one process to try and bring these firms in under contract, and that's what we bring before you this evening. Our recommendation is to award this in a fashion that will be consistent with the services that are currently being provided by these two firms.
Who got the lowest bid for the whole thing? You know the answer?
The orig- the original submittal, if you add up all of the hourly rates, Flora's Investments was a hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents, and American Surveillance for the same levels would be one hundred and twenty dollars and six cents.
Uh, Mr. Kalapa, we had a, an emergency, didn't we, this year? Was it this year or last year?
Uh, earlier this summer, in June, as a matter of fact, we had to terminate one of our contractors for a variety of reasons. City manager terminated that contractor.
And, and what company did we call and, and how soon were they operating?
The decision was made to call Flora's Investments for the reason that they were under a City Commission awarded contract, being at the airport and at the landfill and at Public Works, and that contract allowed for additional levels of service in additional facilities. They responded immediately and put security guards in City Plaza as well as this building that very same day.
Is it true, sir, that they were there within an hour?
Yes, yes.
How long, how, excuse me, how long has American Investigations been, uh, providing security at the airport?
They would go back to the early nineties, sir.
And what type of service have they provided?
Well, again, in going through the evaluation process, we didn't come up with anything that would negate their ability to perform that service, so the assumption is that their service has been good.
Let me ask you something. And I talked to you earlier on the phone about this, but I'm still not clear on this. I mean, I'm seeing the, the bids, and I see how one company was one penny under the lowest bidder after they were allowed to come back, and I guess both of them were allowed to find out what each other bid.
Yes.
Right?
That is correct. That's why I, I stated earlier when the cost components to these requests for proposals were open...
Have people back there shaking, nodding their head, "No"?
Those, well, sir, I, I can only speak as to what occurred in the Purchasing Department. Those cost components were opened in public and the prices were read aloud. The reason that we do that is so that, as stated in our request for proposals, we state all of the steps that we're gonna go through in the process, and we do, in fact, at the end, we did state that we would be asking for best and final offers. It is in the city's best interest, and it is our intention to bring to you the lowest possible prices. And by going through this negotiated method of bringing you this recommendation this evening, we are bringing you the lowest possible prices.
Okay, I asked you earlier on this, when Eddie Lucio's firm came up here and they weren't allowed to negotiate, but the lowest bidder was, why wasn't it done in this case where the lowest bidder was, American Surveillance? And they weren't allowed to, they weren't the only ones allowed to negotiate?
Well, you're mixing two different solicitation...
No, I don't think I am.
But I will, I will...
I just wanna understand the process you do things by, because in one sense, you're not, you're not bringing in both players for the bus thing with that issue with, uh, real shelters.
Right.
But then on here, in this case, you're bringing in two people to negotiate a low bid price, but you didn't do it with, with, uh, with the bus thing, with Eddie Lucio and, and the firm out of Laredo.
That is correct.
I, I just wanna understand what process we follow, or do we change the process, or what do we do? What, I mean...
The process is flexible. When we issued the request for proposals for the advertising contract for bus, it was specifically stated in our request for proposals that the, that the respondents needed to submit their best prices with their proposal, that there would not be a request for best and final offers. The opposite occurred in this particular solicitation.
Let me ask you, the mayor of you, allow me, I'd like to call up Jaime Escobedo from American Surveillance just so he can provide some input, the things he told me, how he seemed, you know, this, the process was, was just done in a way where he didn't...
I have no problem. Escuela, would you please come forward, please? But before you do that, Paul, you said that, uh, American Surveillance was a hundred and twenty dollars?
If you take all of the individual hourly rates in the aggregate in their original submittal before best and final offers were requested, mayor, the total amount would be a hundred and twenty dollars and six cents. And that's in comparison to the Flora's Investments' original, uh, submittal of a hundred and forty-six dollars, forty-five cents. After the best and final offers were submitted, those numbers changed.
Okay, and, and let me ask, let me ask, I guess, I guess, management, is there a purpose for splitting these things up? Uh, I mean, I, I assume we went out for bids for the whole enchilada?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong. Did we do that, or did we not do that?
Well, the, the reason we went out on bid is because we did not have a, a commission approval on, on overall, uh... Security, security for the city, and we wanted to get that done.
But do you prefer, do you prefer one into two, do you prefer splitting it up? Because I understood it was out for bids for the whole thing, and both, everybody was allowed to bid for the, on the whole thing. And as you're a city manager, do you prefer to split it up, or do you prefer the whole thing, under one company?
Well, I mean, obviously, that's gonna be your decision. I mean, to, to us, we can work with both, or we can work with one. It, it's...
You don't have any preference?
I, I really, it, it, it's tough to say.
It's here from, from Mr. ...
It's hard to say, we just want one. If that's the way the numbers came out, that's the way we would have recommended it.
Because the, the overall numbers were that, uh, Escuela was cheaper than the, Mr. Floris, is that what you're saying?
From what I was told, that there, he was a lot cheaper, then it went back out for bids, and the other one came in close to, to American Surveillance, and that's where we're at. And I, he had concerns, he's like, "Hey, I was real low from the beginning. Now you just let people get one penny under me, and now it's causing this, this separation where the bulk of the security will go to the guy who's higher."
Okay, let, let me, let me, let's hear, let's hear Mr. Escuela, because I'm interested to find out how that penny came about too, I mean, out of curiosity.
And most of the items there were by a penny. I mean, thirty-six point six-three, thirty-six point six-four, that's, that's, that's close, man.
Okay, uh...
Honorable mayor, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jaime Escobedo, Chief Executive Officer for American Surveillance Company. I just, uh, I'm gonna be very brief. Basically, uh, I was one of the three companies that were interviewed. I was evaluated the highest. I had the highest evaluation. It was, uh, four panel members or committee members that evaluated the companies. And, uh, I was brought in and told that my company was rated the highest, and now considering all of the, uh, all of the contracts, what, what is my best and final offer? I was not told there was two companies involved.
Were you told you were the lowest bidder?
I was told I was the, evaluated the highest.
Okay.
And then at that point, I was to give my best and final offer, and, uh, I was, I was not told there was two companies involved, so I was considering the whole picture.
So, and then you made this bid of, uh, ten-twenty-five, nine-sixty-four, thirteen-twenty, twelve-sixty-six, down the line. You made that bid?
Uh...
As your final bid? I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm asking you.
Yes, so, some of those numbers were the initial numbers. They were, uh, the, when the bid was submitted, everything was considered as a, as a whole, and the lowest possible numbers were given. Uh, we were able to lower a couple of those prices in consideration.
How can you explain, with the competition getting one cent under you? Did you see his bid? Were you allowed to see his bid?
The bids were, the prices were actually written, read out loud initially.
Okay.
But the, uh, the second price is where we gave our best and final offer, we're not. I, we, I understood...
That's what I'm trying to get to, and educate me, please, because you all, Mr. Kalapa, and you all went through the process, I didn't. So, on your last and final offer, you made, like, for instance, um, if you go to the best and final offer, you have ten-twenty-five, okay?
Right.
Okay, on the first one. And your competitor, okay, it's up there, okay?
The blue on the far right, the eleven-ninety-two and the eleven-thirty-nine, those are the best.
Okay, okay, and then your competitor, ten-twenty-four. Was he able to see your last and final offer? I mean, was it publicly done, or did you make your final offer, "Hey, I bid ten-twenty-five," and then he says, "I bid ten-twenty-four"? Was it done publicly like that, or did you write it down?
No, the, the best and final offers were done independently with, uh...
And what?
With, the best and final offer was done independently with my company, and I assume that's the way it was done with his company.
So, it was confidential?
It was confidential, yes. Now, now, the numbers that, that were a penny below mine were initially read out loud. But considering the fact that I thought that I was the only company that was to be recommended, I lowered two prices, because the bid was submitted in such fashion that it's the bottom, bottom, bottom-line figures.
And you were told that it might be split?
No, I was never told that.
So, you bid it on the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Now, can your company handle both things?
Yes.
Let me ask Escuela this, because I'm, I'm completely in the dark here, Mr. Kalapa, okay? Here you got the hourly rate at sixteen-seventy-five for the landfill plus a vehicle of three hundred and fifty.
Those, the, what you're looking at is the existing rates, what we're paying now.
Yeah, but Mr. Mr. Floris, uh, bill, uh, bid it at twelve-sixty-five. How come you're awarding him higher than what he bid it, plus a vehicle? Uh, that, that's confusing to me.
We're awarding it lower, mayor, not...
No, it's just, well, maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Current hourly rate is what we're paying.
Roman, number four, four, Mr. Kalapa?
Roman, number four.
Security officer on arm, on commission shall provide a four-by-four vehicle approved by city to patrol unpaved streets in rough terrain at city landfill and any other property. And you award Mr. Floris twelve-sixty-five, I mean, he, he bids twelve-sixty-five, but you award Mr. Floris over here sixteen-seventy-five per hour, plus a vehicle. How, how's that done?
Mayor, I'm gonna repeat again. What you're reading, that column of sixteen-seventy-five, is what we're paying under the existing contract, which is expiring September thirtieth.
So, after September thirtieth, they're gonna be paying twelve-sixty-five?
Which was the price came about under their best and final offer. Their original submittal was seventeen-forty. That price under best and final is twelve-sixty-five. So, in the aggregate, we're bringing a contract to you that will be costing the city equal to or less than what we're paying now. We do anticipate a rather large increase in services over the next period, and that's why we're bringing to you two security firms.
But if there's a need, you can always bring back a security firm, right?
Yes, sir. And we have the concern that if we have only one firm, either one, and we have no preference over either one, and we have a similar instance or a similar situation that happened when we had to terminate the firm at municipal court immediately, under one day's notice for an event that occurred there, then the city would be left completely without security service in all areas throughout the city.
Well, let me ask you something. If we call AISI, they'll be here within minutes, right?
They would, in order to do that, they would have to be under...
Mr. Floris, is he, he can answer that?
Well, you know, the, the... Let him answer the question, okay?
Go ahead.
Please, Mr. Kalapa.
In order to do that, we would wanna have a contract in place awarded by this body that will allow for additional services to be brought on. That's what happened in June when we had to terminate one contract. We went to Mr. Floris because his contract had language that allowed for additional services on an immediate emergency basis. If we go down to just one firm and something happens with one of their security guards that causes us to terminate the contracts, there will be no security anywhere in the city that could impact operations at the airport.
Well, we got the police chief here. I'm sure he could provide emergency security if need be, and we'll pay him extra if we have to.
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
That's not the point. I, I, I think to use scare tactics like that is not, is not the way to do it. My concern, my concern is this, Commissioner, let me point this out. If you, as purchasing officer, put out for bids the whole thing, okay? You put out the, for bids the whole thing, and both gentlemen compete for that in good faith, and they come here knowing they're bidding on the whole thing. Now you're concerned, all of a sudden, that you're splitting it and that you may be left without security. That, wait a second, that contradicts the initial process. Okay, now, let me finish, Mr. Kalapa. Now, if, I'm not favoring one or the other, I'm going by the facts. If one is bidding a hundred and twenty dollars oh six and the other one's one forty-six, clearly, there's a low bidder. Okay, and twenty-six dollars difference, okay? And then you got the same low bidder being awarded the highest...
Rate.
Rate. That's, I find that disturbing, Mr. Kalapa?
Well, first of all, mayor, if this were a bid, you would be one hundred absolutely percent correct. This is a negotiated contract.
But you first put it out to bid, then you go out and negotiate.
That should go to the lowest bidder, though.
No, sir. This was a request for proposals.
I think we need to look at purchasing how, because, I mean, I'm getting, I, I think this undermines the bidding process. I think, I think, in my opinion, Mr. Floris, in my opinion, Mr. Kalapa.
Result of our efforts.
I think the incentive is taken away from those who come here and bid in good faith. Why bid?
I, I've got one question for Mr. Floris, and I'm sure he'll do a one-liner. When you bid for this, when you put in, when you placed your bid, were you consciously aware that this would be split, or were you bidding for the entire contract?
From day one, at the pre-bid opening, we were made aware that we could bid on one department or all departments, okay? I proudly served this city since nineteen ninety-one, and I don't understand why, uh, some of you folks can't understand the language behind this. It was a, a request for proposals, not a bid.
But you're not asking, you're not answering his question on, "Did you bid for the whole thing or not?"
Yes, I did.
Okay, that's the answer. That's it. It was a request for a proposal, you submitted your proposal, okay? It's a bid. You, this is what I'm bidding on, this whole contract.
No, sir. With all due respect, mayor, a bid is a bid, a proposal is a proposal.
Okay, your proposal for the whole thing was a hundred and forty-six dollars per hour. That was your proposal, okay?
That was the original amount that, that we had proposed, but again, the language you have for a best...
Okay, I stand corrected. Okay, I stand corrected. I'll use your word as proposal, okay? So, in, in fairness, both of you submitted proposals. One is cheaper than the other. City manager, I find this disturbing, whether it's proposal or bids, that we have a low, a high score, low proposal, and then it comes, it's coming here being split when intentionally it was sent out for everybody. And then I see a penny difference, one penny difference on the column there. I, I just think if this is the formula we're gonna accept, if this is the formula we're gonna accept, it's gotta be done for everybody, okay? We can't be changing whatever suits Mr. Kalapa or somebody else, whoever's handling it, because this could easily be construed that it's being manipulated, okay? And if it's gonna be, no, wait a second. No, it could easily be construed, I'm saying, it could easily be construed. We need to clearly define what criteria we're gonna set, okay? To make sure that the perception's not there, and encourage people to submit proposals or bids, that they're, they're, they're dealing in good faith and the criteria clearly defines what the expectation is. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kalapa.
Uh, state statute is very specific as to... State statute is very specific as to specifying what types of solicitations are capable of being done, either through a bid process or through a request for proposals. Typically, and traditionally, under the city, in the 10 years that I have served, when we go out for a service contract, it's done through a request for proposals so that we can negotiate the best and most favorable terms for the city. Under state statute, that is allowable. Civil construction projects, for example, street construction projects are not allowed to be solicited through the R F P process. They have to be based on low bid. Commodity procurements, same thing, have to be procured under the bid basis because you're comparing apples to apples. When you do a service agreement, you want to sit down and negotiate with both firms and bring the best possible pricing to the commission. If you were to follow your premise and say, this was a bid, let's just go with the original prices, then the city would be paying more for the services than the contracts I'm bringing before you this evening, which are at negotiated lower rates.
But I think it's unfortunate that you used one proposal, high proposal, 146 and 120. It's unfortunate that... I think the system is allowed to use that to really undermine, I think, what the good faith intent was there. If I were him, I wouldn't bid, I wouldn't submit any proposals to the city. I wouldn't even mess with it. I want to ask him a question again, Jaime.
May I just address, Mayor, and then you can do that? If I may just respond to what you're saying. When we issue the R F Ps, we state every step that we're going to go through. When the respondents participate and acknowledge their participation, they're accepting the process.
So, at what stage did you tell them you're splitting it?
We made that decision...
So, why have a panel?
I made the recommendation.
Who made the decision to split it?
I made the recommendation to the city manager in the agenda item, based on the entire process, the input that I was receiving from the departments, the capabilities of both security services, the negotiated rates between both firms, and what I thought would be in the best interest of the city based on historical information.
Can I talk to Mr. Escobedo real quick? Let me ask you a question, and when I talked to you today, you told me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you were told that it was going to have to be split, and that it was... And this is from Paul Calapa, saying that his boss wanted it split. Is that true or not?
I believe he said, management.
Management. His upper management wanted it split.
Yes.
And his upper management, of course, is Charlie Gallow. Did you ask... Is that what happened?
I don't think that was... I don't need to defend Charlie, but I spoke with Charlie about this earlier. He didn't tell me that at all. I mean, I don't believe Charlie.
Just before he got put on the commission, Paul Calapa informed me that he was going to recommend a split on the award.
Okay, but when you talked to Mr. Calapa...
That... You can award the contract to one or both.
I know.
That's your decision.
And that's fine. That's fine, you know? But what we're looking here is fairness. Let's look at the principle of the thing, okay? Because this is really bothering me. I don't think you instructed Mr. Calapa to split it, did you?
I did not instruct him to it, to split it. He recommended to me that he was...
Yeah, but that's different, okay?
Present it that way to the commission.
That's different from what Mr. Escobedo understood. But what I'm saying here is, I find it disturbing and a little uncomfortable that if he initially puts it out off a bid, I mean, off a proposals, and they both submit proposals on the whole enchilada, that he has the liberty to change the rules. Again, that's what he's doing. Because he submitted, and he submitted a proposal on the whole enchilada. Now, somebody's making a decision, and has a decision, and can do it legally. I don't have any problem with that. He can do it legally. But is it fair? And is it fostering a good process that allows future proposals or future bidders? I think it undermines our process, and I think in the end, we're going to be hurt by it, by doing this. If you're going to change the rules in the middle of the game, that's not right. You're going to do it... You're going to set the criteria, and you're going to follow that criteria, and everybody should know when they get started.
I'd like to make a motion.
Not in the middle of the game.
I'd like to make a motion, and this is my motion. I motion to award this contract to the lowest bidder, and who was evaluated the highest, which is American Surveillance, based on his good faith and his, and the spirit of how this should work. They both put in for the whole enchilada. Mr. Escobedo was the low bidder, low proposal, and the highest rated. I propose to give him the whole...
Can we have a motion? Can I have a second? Can I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Escobedo gets it. Nobody said nay. What?
I, for the record, Commissioner Garcia, I'm abstaining due to...
Who's this? Okay, you abstain?
Potential conflict of interest on my part.
No problem. So, we have...
I just wish I could see the numbers.
Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Hold on. What happened here?
There was no votes.
I'd be happy to make a motion to adjourn, and at 1020, I think this affects our ability to...
You motioned, I seconded it, and it was approved. Okay. Can we have a motion?
I think I already made that motion to adjourn.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
It's already been done, Mayor.
For the third time, I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 1020.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye. 10:20 P. M.